You're good when you are, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Good evening. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for June 1st, 2020. Call upon Councilmember Nancy Ford.
Thank you, Mayor. If you would join me, please, in a moment of silent reflection. And now for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristen Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Mayor Protem Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Simpson?
Here.
Record will reflect that we've got four councilmembers in council chambers pursuant to rules that we have passed. Three councilmembers are on a Zoom connection, are able to hear us, and will be able to interact throughout the meeting. With that, we have the approval of the minutes of May 18th, 2020. Since we're not using our usual button system, I just need anyone who has any changes to the minutes of May 18th, 2020 to speak up. If not, they will stand approved as presented. Not hearing anything from anyone, they are approved. Next, I'll call upon Councilmember David Jones for proclamation.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to read a proclamation that's for national gun violence awareness. The time is interesting that we live in today, but whereas every day more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence, and on average, there are more than 13,000 gun homicides every year, making Americans 25 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And Colorado has 769 gun deaths every year, with a rate of 13.5 deaths per 100,000 people, the 21st-highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. And whereas, support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with gun safety and keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas, in January 2013, Hadiya, and I apologize for misspelling or mispronouncing that, Pendleton, a teenager who marched in the presidential inaugural parade and was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should now be celebrating her 23rd birthday. To help honor Hadiya and more than 100 Americans whose lives are cut short every day and the countless survivors who are injured by the shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 5th, 2020, the first Friday in June, as the 6th National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas, the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of life, of human life. And whereas, by wearing orange on June 5th, 2020, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun-violent victims and survivors, such as those from the December 2007 youth with a mission shooting in Arvada. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the city of Arvada, Colorado, that the first Friday in June, June 5th, 2020, be designated National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and we encourage all to support local efforts to prevent the tragic efforts of gun violence and honor and value human lives. Dated the first day of June, 2020, signed by the mayor and all members of council. And I believe there are a few people here in support of this proclamation, but I also have been told that this will be mailed to the organizers. So, thank you.
Ms. Rush, did we have somebody who was accepting this by Zoom or something, or not? At one point, we thought? Or, okay.
Bruce, do we have someone on the line?
Well, actually, somebody in the audience is good.
I apologize. I was told otherwise. If you'd like to come down. And I apologize for not recognizing you. I didn't know you were here.
No problem.
And please accept my apology for the mispronunciation of her name.
No problem. Yeah. Thank you so much. I just have a couple things I'd love to say, if that's all right.
Please.
Okay, thanks. My name is Jennifer Douglas. I'm with Moms Demand Action, North Jeffco Group, and I'm here with a couple of my colleagues, Kathleen Charles and Kim Beer-Brower. I am an Arvada resident. I'm a mom of three children, and I am an educator. So, in addition to being involved with Moms Demand Action, I'm also involved with Students Demand Action. I am a graduate of Columbine High School, and I'm also a survivor of the shootings there in 1999. I was a teacher there at that time. So, Moms Demand Action is a movement of Americans, both, we say, mothers and others, fighting for public safety measures that can protect people from gun violence. So, we are not anti-Second Amendment. We are against gun violence, and we support sensible solutions to gun violence. Some of our members, in fact, are gun owners. We have a program called Be Smart that's all about gun safety and responsible gun ownership. So, we want to thank you for issuing this proclamation as part of National Gun Violence Awareness Day. As mentioned in the proclamation, this year it falls on Friday, June 5th, and it marks the beginning of Wear Orange Weekend. And this year, we're bringing our communities together to wear orange from home in order to keep our families and others safe. So, Wear Orange began with teenagers in Chicago who wanted to honor their friend, Hadiya Pendleton, who was, as mentioned, shot and killed at the age of 15. Hadiya was at a park in Chicago in January 2013, celebrating the end of final exams when she was killed. The week before, she had performed at President Obama's Second Inauguration. We also feel that we have to acknowledge the violence of the last couple of weeks and months against our African-American brothers and sisters. We renounce the atrocities that we have all seen in recent weeks and stand with those, peacefully protesting and fighting against both systemic and interpersonal racism. Gun violence and racism are interconnected. Gun violence disproportionately impacts brown and black communities. When racism is combined with access to guns, as we saw at the Walmart shooting in El Paso last August, the outcomes are terrifying. So, again, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. If you're interested in getting involved in the work that we do, there's a couple ways you can do that. One is our Be Smart program that I mentioned is about safe gun ownership is a program that we can do as a presentation. So, we try to partner with school PTAs and other community organizations. The acronym SMART stands for securing all guns in your home and vehicles, modeling responsible behavior around guns, asking about the presence of unsecured guns in other homes, recognizing the role of guns in suicide, and telling your peers to be smart. You can also join one of our local meetings. You can join Mayor's Against Illegal Guns, which is another part of the Every Town organization, which Moms Demand Action and the Every Town Survivor Network are also part of, if you're not already a part of that. And last, you can support Universal Background Checks. We have them here in Colorado, but we don't have them at the federal level. Universal Background Checks have strong bipartisan support, and so we feel like it's just a simple, sensible step we can take to reduce gun violence. So, thank you again. In issuing this proclamation, you are acknowledging the 100 Americans who are killed every day by gun violence, including those in our own community. This includes the YWAM victims in 2007, and more recently, a Pomona student and a child in Westminster, both accidental deaths by firearms. Thank you for honoring their lives with this proclamation. You are also acknowledging the thousands of people in our community who have been personally impacted by gun violence, including me. Thank you for honoring our lives and joining us in this important work. Together, we can end gun violence. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next, we have public comment. I don't have anyone signed up to present live public comment. Do we have anybody on a Zoom call for public comment?
That is negative, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And do we have any emails that need to be read into the record as part of?
Mayor, members of council, yes, we do. I'm prepared to read them. My name's Ben Irwin, Chief Communications Manager for the city. The first message that we have is from somebody with an email address that starts with Coffee Shop 250. They write, "I live across the street from the soccer fields and received a letter about the sign the city wishes to put up on 58th and Oak Street. I see no reason to install a 12-foot-tall-by-9-foot-wide sign. Those who are involved in sports already have the information they need. This will clutter an already overpacked area." These are not Wadsworth, this is not Wadsworth or I-70. It is too big and gaudy for this family neighborhood. I would like to have this read into the record. Thank you. The next message comes from Jonah Hearn. "Mayor and members of Arvada City Council, I am writing today looking for guidance on a petition of referendum on the upcoming waste hauling measure. If you, as a body, decide the issue without a vote of the people, I and a large group of other Arvada residents intend to file a petition of referendum the day after you make this decision. In the interest of public safety, it would not be prudent for a group of over 100 people to go door-to-door in our city. I am looking for guidance today as to the signature requirement. Governor Polis has relaxed the rules at the state level to allow email and standard mail. I am asking the same with the addition of an online petition. We all want what is in the best interest of the public. At this point, with safer at-home likely-in-place through the fall, citizens of Arvada will not have the safe or legal ability to enjoy the full use of our city charter. I look forward to hearing from you." The next message is from Stephen Byers. "After careful consideration, I would like to express my support for the city's trash hauling proposal. I believe consolidating trash hauling will provide cost savings and be beneficial to the majority of Arvada citizens. For most, costs will be reduced. The proposal is also beneficial for the environment by reducing emissions and increasing recycling. I also believe the downward pressure on prices from the marketplace will be retained by requiring a rebidding on the contract at regular intervals, as well as with opt-out provisions. At the same time, I would like to say that we will be one of the households that opt out of the system. We live in scenic heights in District 2 and have a large yard with many trees. The proposal is unworkable for us and the requirement to drop off yard waste. Arvada is the first community where I've lived where trash hauling was not a municipal responsibility, but also in those areas, yard waste was picked up, not required to be dropped off. I cannot put my large volume of leaves and branches in my car and take them to a drop-off location. I also believe this drop-off requirement will be a disincentive to planting of trees we need for our environment. This is the one flaw I see in an otherwise great program and hope that if the trash hauling proposal is approved, that this issue will be addressed in the future to better serve homeowners like us." The next message comes from Stephanie Wells. "Hello. My name is Stephanie Wells, and I live at 12458 West 70th Place in a neighborhood that is not an HOA. I am tired of five trash trucks coming down my street every week and seeing my neighbors not recycling because they don't want to pay extra for it. I've done a bit of research on other cities that have an organized trash service, talked to folks who lived there before moving to Arvada, and none had anything bad to say about it. What they did say is they can't believe Arvada doesn't have such a program. It seems only people who've never had an organized trash service are the ones opposed to it. Thank you very much for listening." The next message comes from Jeff Holman. "If we are all to survive and thrive on this planet, then we must be responsible caretakers. We must be forward-thinking and consider the ramifications of our wasteful and polluting ways. We all must think of what we are leaving to our children, grandchildren, and all future generations. I believe in the Boy Scott motto, 'Leave it better than you found it.' Our current wasteful ways are destroying the planet. Change happens slowly, and every little bit counts. Increasing the abysmal 13% recycling rate of Arvada and reducing truck pollution are two benefits of the consolidated waste hauler system that I am strongly in favor of. The arguments over the opt-out fee are truly without merit. Continue on our current path, and in the future, it will cost infinitely more than this small monthly fee. It may even cost the life of a child or a grandchild of ours who inherits a mess because we couldn't think beyond our own short-term wants and needs. Do the right thing for the future, stand up, and be proud that you thought of others first." The next message comes from Sarah Neal. "Dear Arvada City Council, I am a longtime resident of Arvada and a Colorado native. Sustainability is one of my family's top priorities. Climate change is a very real threat to my children's future, and I am doing everything I can to raise them to be aware of their impacts on the environment and reduce those impacts. Arvada needs to step up to the challenges presented by climate change and do everything possible to reduce our impact on the environment. We want to live in a place where we can be proud of that, and that reflects our values. The number of trash trucks that come down our street every day is appalling. It's not only a nuisance noise-wise, it pollutes, ruins our neighborhood roads, and is extremely inefficient. I have always been very frustrated with my recycling and trash hauling services. We pay extra for recycling, and I've never found a company that will do less trash pickups and more recycling services. While I am not opposed to paying extra for recycling services, we basically pay for trash service that we do not use. I am very excited for the new proposed organized waste hauling system because it is a much better fit than I have ever been able to find offered by the many hauling companies. A common argument that I have heard against this is that people don't want their right to choose a trash hauler taken away. I have always tried to support small local companies with our hauling needs, and they generally very quickly get bought up by other larger companies. So, for me, that argument isn't especially valid. The residential recycling rate in Arvada is abysmally low. Organized waste hauling will make recycling more available to our residents and increase our rate. Please implement the organized waste hauling program in Arvada." The next message comes from Sydney Vogel. "My wife and I wish to voice our support for the one-hauler concept with included recycling. The elimination of streetware from multiple traffic should in itself merit the change." The next statement comes from Pat Malone. "To the Arvada City Council, I am grateful that those of us in support of single-hauler trash collection are being heard by the city council. Great research has been done, and a viable plan is on the table, one that can improve our city's recycling efforts, save most residents on their monthly fee, in addition to bringing some peace and quiet to our neighborhoods on most days of the week. I strongly urge the council to show further leadership by implementing this program. I believe it is your job to make the decision. You are the ones who thoroughly understand the details of the proposed program and the full benefits to the city. If this is put to a vote for residents to decide, we would be voting in a vacuum without access to the contractual information that is private. Yes, it's contractual, and you will not make everyone happy. However, this is rightfully your call, and I strongly urge you to assume the responsibility and make the decision based on what is best for our town." And he adds, "Be safe, be well." The next message comes from Lisa Smith. "As a social worker who works for a veteran disaster recovery organization, climate change is at the forefront of all our conversations. I would like to applaud the forward-leaning leaders of Arvada who support organized waste hauling as a way to further promote community recycling and reduce air pollution. We have an obligation to make the place we live a better place for our children, grandchildren, family, and friends. Hearing only 13% of Arvada residents recycle was embarrassing. We can do better, and this will allow us to do better. By taking a step forward as a community to promote environmentally-friendly practices, we are setting the example for future generations. While I understand the micro-level concerns of the people regarding costs and implementation, I hope we can come together to improve this program in the coming years. This is just a starting point for a more effective and organized service. There is always room for iterative improvements to make this program more agreeable to all. Again, thank you to the council for thinking about our future and the bigger picture of how this program will positively impact our community and environment." Our next message comes from Steve Nixon. "Dear Mayor and City Councilmembers, Organized Waste Hauling in Arvada, now is the time to finally make this a reality. There are so many good reasons to move forward with Arvada's organized waste hauling proposal. Here are just a few. Less noise and air pollution, safer streets due to reduced heavy traffic, reduced road deterioration and maintenance costs, improved recycling, a more efficient market, and fairer pricing. Let me focus on the last two, since these seem to be the major point of contention. This proposal creates a more efficient market because all the players, including the city, its residents, and the trash haulers, are on a more equal playing field. It is extremely difficult, as a single-residence household, to get clear pricing from providers and to have any market power. Most providers do not advertise their prices because they create different pricing structures for different locations, and many add additional fees that are not necessarily disclosed upfront. As to fairer prices, there is currently no pricing differential between low-waste households and large-waste households, which means that low-waste households are currently subsidizing the high-waste households. Most households will see a significant reduction in their costs and get additional services, but some high-waste households may actually see an increase in their costs, especially if they regularly need to have more than 96 gallons of trash collected each week. This explains why several high-waste households are so upset with this proposal. They will finally end up paying for the amount of trash they produce, which is only fair. Contracting with a trash hauler is a service that I expect my city to provide. I have lived in several cities along the Front Range, and when I moved to Arvada 10 years ago, I was shocked and disappointed that I had to set up my own trash hauling service. I am not really interested in negotiating with waste haulers every few years when I get fed up with the poor service and increased costs from the large corporation who bought out my small, local waste hauler. This has happened to me twice now. I want the city to provide this service just like the other utility services, water, electricity, telecom, and natural gas. This type of service is why I live in the city and not in an unincorporated area. I also don't believe it is appropriate for the city to vote on this as there are many people who will see less benefit from this who could easily sway the vote against those of us who will see a great benefit. Note that people living in the apartments and condo complexes of eight or more units and those living in the HOA will not see all the advantages of this proposal. If there was a way to separate the votes of people directly affected, and there's not, I would be happy to see a vote, but I don't believe this is possible. Thus, this should be a council decision, and I urge you to vote to approve this ordinance change and to approve the proposed contract." The next message comes from Luke Reichardt. "I urge the city council to vote to approve the organized waste hauling ordinance and program that is in front of them. The current system is inequitable, leads to lower costs for the wealthier members of the community, and higher costs for individual families who can barely afford it. The proposed rate of $1,150 per month for both trash and recycling would reduce my annual costs by more than half, and I would like to be able to take advantage of additional services that are not currently offered in Arvada at reasonable prices. The current system also perpetuates the false myth that choice and competition for the sake of choice and competition automatically results in better consumer conditions. This belief, although popular, has no basis in the current reality. If you are not fortunate enough to live in an HOA neighborhood, you get to pick from a wide selection of serially unreliable small haulers who are only in the business to build up enough customers to sell their list to another company for a quick profit. As a result, these smaller haulers are generally unconcerned with making reliability or customer service part of their waste hauling services, which already do not include many of the services enjoyed by Arvada neighbors. Their short-term outlook makes it impossible to hold them accountable to the promises they make when soliciting your business. I have cycled through many of these small haulers in my time living in Arvada and see no reason for our elected officials to support such a flawed, wasteful, and unethical business practice. Besides making the waste hauling system more affordable and more reliable with more choice of services, approval of the proposed ordinance and program will show that the city council is serious in pursuit of its stated goals of greenhouse gas reduction. Proof of this will be seen soon after implementation as Arvada's abysmally-low recycling rate of just 13%, far below that of our neighbors, will rise, and our streets will not have to endure the wear and tear of daily parade of waste collection vehicles. Please vote to approve the measure in front of you and to chart a sensible path forward to organized waste hauling in Arvada." The next comment comes, our last public comment item, comes from Randy Mormon. "Dear Mayor Williams and the Arvada City Council, I write to you today to express my support for the organized waste hauling proposal. It is a smart decision for us to make now that will boost our local economy. With COVID-19, recycling has been deemed an essential industry by the Department of Homeland Security. One of the main reasons for this is not only because we all have recyclable materials that we need to get rid of in our homes and businesses, but also because manufacturers are demanding more recycled feedstock, and they want more of it sourced nationally and locally. Recyclers are responsible for supplying 58% of the feedstock to paper mills in the U.S., the same paper mills that have seen an increased demand for the toilet paper and tissues they manufacture. The food and beverage industries have ramped up production to meet unprecedented demand, and they need to keep a strong, dependable supply of recycled materials. Of course, the demand for recycled corrugated cardboard has gone up with the increase in home deliveries. Recycled metal, paper, plastics, and other commodity-grade materials are feeding critical U.S. manufacturing operations for the production of rebar, wiring, tubing, transportation, packaging, and other materials needed for construction of hospitals, hospital beds, and ventilators. A local plastics recycler, Direct Polymers, uses recycled plastic to make face shields for hospital workers. Even before COVID-19, recycling has contributed substantially to our economy. In 2017, this market was valued at about $265 billion in the U.S. alone. By the year 2024, the market is expected to grow to about $377 billion. And it's a job maker. The recycling industry creates 10 times more jobs than landfilling. Our local businesses, including Momentum Glass Recycling, Ball Corporation, and Molson Coors, employ many residents from the Arvada area, yet they can't get enough recycling materials from Colorado to be able to rely on shipping these materials from out of state. Imagine what a difference we could make if we improved our recycling rate from the 13% to more than 30%, like our neighboring communities that have organized waste hauling. Organized waste hauling makes recycling easy and convenient. With more than 32,000 homes participating in recycling, we could significantly boost the local economy by providing more recycled materials to these local businesses who will then save money when they use recycled feedstock. With lower feedstock costs, they could hire more local employees. The negotiated contract for organized waste hauling we have before us is a good deal. It provides greater access to the recycling as requested by most of our residents on community surveys, and it provides more options for residents to lower their own waste and recycling costs. It will also put more recycled materials in our local economy, creating jobs. Not to mention, these recycled materials will help our community and our state fight COVID-19. If we delay and pass up this deal, we greatly risk the chances of getting another good offer as the national waste hauling prices are going up." I think he says, "Make the right choice for our community and pass the organized waste hauling ordinance." That's all our messages.
Hey, very good. We have next the consent agenda. There's five items on it. First is R 2004-3, a resolution authorizing an agreement by and between the city of Arvada and Diamond Contracting Corporation for the 2020 water main replacement project in an amount not to exceed $3.2 million. The next is a resolution concurring in acknowledging the pending vacation by Jefferson County of a 30-foot-wide portion of a right-of-way located between 8183 West 3rd Avenue and Patridge Open Space. Next is a resolution authorizing change order number two to an agreement by and between the city of Arvada and Powers Brown Architecture of Colorado LLC in the amount of $33,670 for additional design services related to the Park's fleet building. Next is a resolution authorizing a sixth revision to the city of Arvada City Council's City Strategic Plan 2014 to 2019. And the fifth one is a resolution authorizing the first revision to the city of Arvada City Council's City Strategic Plan 2020 to 2025. Do I have a motion? And again, I don't have light capabilities. Okay, Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that resolutions R 20-043 through R 20-047 all be approved.
Motions for approval. I will do a roll call vote. And so, Mr. Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Ms. Ford?
Aye. Mayor, I'd like to just make a correction. You said $33 million. It's $33,000 on item 6A3.
6A3.
On the...
Oh, okay, $33,000. You're right. $33,670. Thank you so much for correcting me on that.
An aye for me.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marriott?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. That passes unanimously. Next, we have a motion to waive the minimum interval requirement and accept an application for a certificate of compliance for the development of property located at 7315 and 7317 Grandview Avenue and 7318 West 57th Avenue. Rachel Morris, are you taking this?
I am, Your Honor. Just to give council some background before you discuss and vote on your motion, as council will recall, on December 16, 2019, city council heard an appeal regarding a certificate of compliance for the project. The project was proposed by the owner of the property, Grandview Station LLC, and appeal of the certificate of compliance was made by Lori Drianka, an adjacent landowner. After hearing the appeal, city council voted against affirming the certificate of compliance, 33, with one council member recused. Council previously voted to rehear the appeal of the certificate of compliance on January 27, 2020, under Section 3117 of the Former Land Development Code. Since that time, for a variety of reasons... Since that time, for a variety of reasons, it was necessary to vacate the rehearing, which had been scheduled for June eighth, twenty twenty, regarding the project, and proceed with any further action concerning the project under the new Land Development Code. To give counsel a bit of a framework, under section eight-two-three-sixteen of the new Land Development Code, once an application has been denied, a substantially similar application cannot be accepted by the city in the following twelve months unless, among other reasons, City Council waives the minimum interval requirement for good cause shown. This motion, the proposed motion, allows City Council to vote on whether to waive the minimum interval requirement and accept a new application on the project for the issuance of a certificate of compliance. City Council must determine that good cause exists in order to waive the minimum interval requirement. The Arvada team submits for counsel's determination a motion to waive the minimum interval requirement and accept an application for a certificate of compliance for the development of property located at seventy-three fifteen and seventy-three seventeen Grandview Avenue and seventy-three eighteen West Fifty-seventh Avenue.
I know we've got one person in the audience signed up to speak, and I think we've got either a letter to be read into, I believe, a letter to be read into the record, and then if any others are here. Keen Palmer. Mr. Palmer, if you'll stand at the X, please do not touch the microphone.
May I remove this?
You may, yes, you may certainly remove the mask to speak.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. My name is Keen Palmer, and I'm a representative of Grandview Station, excuse me, which is the applicant. Thank you very much for considering this motion tonight. I'm here to ask that you do allow us to resubmit a new application before the one-year waiting Not much is good. I guess I can't find much good out of the last three months, to be honest with you, outside of the fact that what it's allowed us to do as a team is, we have spent a lot of time analyzing the people that are against this project, their materials, to really understand what the issues are with the design guidelines, what, what issues that they have, where they find our project is not compliant. And we've spent a lot of time over the last couple of months addressing those issues. So we don't agree with all of their issues, but the majority of their issues have to do with a couple key features of our proposed building, the north facade, the residential entry, and I won't get into a lot of detail, but we spent a lot of time with our team, with our architectural team, addressing those issues. And we think we have some solutions that will, I don't know if they'll satisfy everybody, but at least we're trying to meet people in the middle and alter the project to, to satisfy some of the opponent's issues with that. So, you know, I, I think that we are very excited about the changes we made, we liked the building before, we think it's a good addition to the city and to Old Town in particular. The changes, I hope you'll find pleasing as well, so I'm here to ask that you allow us to resubmit this new application without waiting a year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And we do have a letter to be read into the record.
Mayor, we have several statements, a letter from Ms. Drenka and several other statements. Ms. Drenka also has submitted some photos that she asked that we display. I believe Bruce has those, and he's gonna put those up now. The statement is, "Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, City Staff, and all those in attendance. I regret that I am not able to be present in person due to safety concerns. In regards to the motion to waive the minimum interval requirement and accept an application for a certificate of compliance for the development of a property located at seventy-three fifteen and seventy-three seventeen Grandview Avenue and seventy-three eighteen West Fifty-seventh Avenue, I respectfully ask that you vote against all, against allowing this consideration for the following reasons. One, there is no good cause that has been displayed here by a property owner who has purposely neglected his property and allowed criminal activity to occur, endangering not only the public, including myself and my family, but the City of Arvada Police Department. Two, there is no good cause that has been displayed here when a person has not made any attempt to make repairs to the fencing or boards in many months, but has created a dangerous situation that continues to run down the east end of Grandview. Three, there is no good cause that has been displayed here in not responding to, to the, to us, the property owners, who would be affected the most when we have tried to meet and discuss options for a development that would not destroy our property. I respectfully ask that you vote no, and do not allow this negligent property owner to reap benefit from a very bad situation that he has created. I appreciate your time and all the work you all do. Stay safe, strong, and healthy." We have a statement from Karen Miller, Mayor and City Council. What we used to have here, sorry, what we used to have here were a couple of rundown properties owned by people who didn't keep up with the overhaul that Old Town was going through. They were all occupied constantly, and we all knew the tenants, whether commercial or residential. The tenants of two units were put out when the owner wanted to sell, and they have not been occupied except for the homeless since. When Lova Drenka died, that space became vacant as well, and the improvements made while she lived there were let go to pot. The only nuisances, then, were feral cats and weeds. Now that we have, now what we have is a full-blown ghetto in the heart of Old Town, homeless, drugs, prostitutes, break-ins, and feral cats and weeds, truly unsafe situation. All the making of this developer, who for years now has kept the spaces vacant and not kept up with the properties at all. He never wanted to do anything with them except tear them down. Historic district be damned, tear them down, glossy new building. He lied to all the neighbors about wanting to build a two-story building that would look appropriately historic, very similar to your building," she puts in quotes, and she references the "we" building. "His proposal is anything but that, and just about all the neighbors that were initially okay with this are now opposed. It took us the better part of a year in 2019 to get this before City Council, and you made the right decision, you rejected the application, but that victory for Old Town was short-lived. Now he wants an exception for twelve, for the twelve-month rule, a favor, a benefit, and expedited process. What has he done to deserve that? There is no good cause for this benefit, this favor, this expedited process. There's no only good cause to force him to keep up the property, or, as the sixteen property owners suggested to him in a letter last year, respect Old Town or move on. The irony that the city has allowed this ghetto to develop in the heart of Old Town, right next door to the most beautifully maintained house, is not lost on anyone. Nor is the irony that an outsider who wants nothing to do with the community and has only had a detrimental impact on it would get an expedited process while Old Town gets the shaft. It is a very, it's very sad to watch, please don't allow this exception." Ezekiel Peters has the next message. Dear Mayor, Dear Mayor Williams and City Council Members, I am submitting this written comment for today's Arvada City Council meeting. I ask that you vote no on the motion to waive the minimal interval requirement and accept an application for a certificate of compliance to the development of property located at seventy-three fifteen and seventy-three seventeen Grandview Avenue, seventy-three eighteen West Fifty-seventh Avenue. While I do not understand, while I do understand this is a purely procedural matter, I do not believe that it serves the public's interest to reconsider the same issue month after month, especially at a time when it is difficult to have meaningful public discourse. There is no doubt that the proposed development is facially non-conforming from its Old Town surroundings, and there is no consensus about what should or should not occur in this case. The current rules allow the property owner to submit a revised plan now, hopefully one more responsive to the community's concerns, or the owner can resubmit the same plan in December, when there will likely be more opportunity for in-person discussion with the community. Both of these seem like good options to me. Please let the process in the Land Development Code work and deny this waiver. Our last written comment is from Ted Harburg. My name is Ted Harburg, and I'm a resident of Old Town. I wanted to take a moment to submit for the record my support for the Grandview Station development, which I have learned is up for a vote tonight. It is also my understanding that counsel will be hearing from an organized letter-writing campaign against the project going into tonight's meeting. I have written counsel on this matter before, but wanted to submit my comments on this matter once more. I moved to Arvada, and specifically to Old Town, Arvada, three years ago in anticipation of the G Line. I have been following the project for many years and chose the neighborhood in part because of my excitement around the two-thousand-seven Arvada Transit Station Framework Plan. I view Old Town as a great, walkable urban environment with the potential to become one of the Denver area's best. With continued residential density and growth of small business community, Old Town could one day rival downtown Boulder. The water power development, in particular, to which I live adjacent, should be considered the model for what can be accomplished in this part of town. I am troubled, however, by recent attempts that I am seeing to roll back the ambition of Old Town, of the Old Town TOD area plan. The ability to foster new development that is both walkable and more economically productive is precisely why the Denver region invested in a commuter rail system. This site, located inside the Old Town, Arvada Business District, and directly across from the G Line Commuter Rail Station, is an ideal location for increased residential and retail. Historic districts are not intended to prevent all growth and change. The existing structures are in bad, in a bad state of repair, and declining to approve this development will likely not prevent their demolition. Furthermore, this is a business district, the proposed development is perfectly in keeping with the scale of commercial structures such as the property at seventy-four oh seven Grandview, only two parcels away. Please note, know that many Old Town residents like, appreciate, and even moved here specifically because of the dense urban atmosphere of our neighborhood. We do not want to see our community become a stale museum or see skyrocketing housing prices like the other place, like in other places that have limited growth, like Boulder. Our neighborhood provides an affordable urban alternative to Denver neighborhoods like Lower Highlands, and is the reason that many of us residents are here. While those of us in the community are in favor of increased density, do not always speak as loudly as those who oppose it, please understand that we are here and that we are excited to live in a dense, walkable community. Those are the messages that we've received.
I thought, didn't I also see a letter from the attorney for Ms. Drenka?
He's on the, he's on the Zoom call.
Oh, on the Zoom call, very good.
And then Lori Drenka, I believe, is on there. She said she's here for questions or clarifications, I believe.
Okay. Okay, let's hear from Ms. Drenka's attorney.
Mr. Carlson, if you'll turn. Mayor, members of council, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Wonderful. Well, good evening, this is Eric Carlson, I'm with David Foster of Foster Graham Mill Seating, Kalasur. We, hold on one second. There we go. And now you can see me as well, correct? Correct. Okay, three sixty South Garfield Street, that's Denver eight-zero-two-zero-nine. Thanks to you, as always, for your time on this matter, and thanks particularly tonight for the ability to provide virtual comment, and thanks to your staff in organizing all that it takes to put together this virtual comment. We submitted a letter this afternoon to you that I'm sure you've received and has been in your packet. We'd like to make, take a minute to just walk through a few of those points, and I think the first that we need to start with is what your legal standard is in the Land Development Code. And we see eight-three, eight-two-three-sixteen A. Before we get to the exception process, it says, "Generally, it is the policy of the city not to allow successive applications after denial." So to start with the general rule, it is the policy of the city to not allow successive applications, and for good reason. Your city has gone through this, your staff has gone through this, you have gone through this process, community members, interested stakeholders, there have been a lot of people who poured a lot of time and effort into these items, and I think for good reason, that's the underlying policy. So I think we start there and identify that any change to that, or any exception to this rule, is contrary to the overall policy and intent of your code. Next, we have twelve months, and beyond that, we have what the request is tonight, and that is a waiver of the twelve-month minimal interval requirement for good cause shown. We look to the Colorado Supreme Court, and we see that good cause shown is substantial or legal justification, and it requires an objective evaluation of different interests in varied factual contexts. So, objective evaluation, different interests, varied factual contexts. As some of the facts have been identified in the, in the previous public comments, we understand the current condition of the property, and I think that it's really important to identify how that property has deteriorated in the last several months before the application was submitted while it's been pending, and as Ms. Drenka identified, there's been little to no, there's been no, absolutely none, protection or rehabilitation of the, of the safe and dangerous conditions that are on the property that are inciting criminal activity, drawing from the resources of your police staff. And it is, I mean, to put it, to put it frankly, it's a, it's a wanton and callous disregard for the risks that those conditions of the property place to all of the community members in Arvada. And to do, to grant an exception there is to, is to grant a favor for those conditions. And I think the second, the second really critical kind of factual analysis here is that we have a developer who, you know, despite testifying to you this evening that they've analyzed the project, they feel like they've made modifications that will address the concerns of, of the Old Town community, they've refused to meet. And I think that that's a really disappointing element here, is that to say we've analyzed the plans, and we think we'll meet their concerns, but having directly offered to meet with them and being refused on multiple occasions, it feels very disingenuous that there is a process, or that there is a actual intent here to meet, and to come up with a proposal that meets the current fabric of Old Town and satisfies the community members therein. So to grant an exception tonight is to do, is to grant a favor to someone who has allowed the property to become incredibly dangerous to the citizens, incite criminal activity, and has refused to sit and meet with those community members about what a plan would look like that would be compatible development with his neighbors and the greater Old Town, Arvada community. So rather than granting this request tonight, what we ask is that you deny, deny the waiver for the interim time, which provides several months, to sit down and to have meaningful conversation about what development here looks. Rather than just repeating a process that has already been evaluated and has already been used by effort, you know, multiple effort by multiple people, use those months to collaborate, to come together with something that can satisfy the needs and the fabric of Old Town, Arvada. So respectfully, we request that you deny the minimum interval waiver tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else signed up to speak on this issue?
No one else, Your Honor.
Thank you so much. Okay, Dot Miller is asked to be recognized first.
I was gonna speak to the motion.
Okay, let's, let's, Nancy, you've, you need to make a statement here.
Yes, Mayor, I need to recuse myself from this vote as I signed Ms. Drenka's petition against the project.
And, and we certainly understand, Ms. Ford, that you signed that prior to any knowledge that this matter might become before City Council at some point in the future, so I respect your recusal on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. I think we'll get, Mr. Marriott's gonna make a motion, and then Ms. Miller wishes to speak to the motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that a motion to waive the minimum interval requirement and accept an application for a certificate of compliance for the development of property located at seventy-three fifteen and seventy-three seventeen Grandview Avenue and seventy-three eighteen West Fifty-seventh Avenue be approved. And the reason why there is, I believe, very good cause for this motion to be approved, and those would be this, at the first go-around, the developer did not get to present his application because of the, the request of the city that the city staff do it. The developer just shouldn't be penalized for this city's previous action, and holding them to that without them, without getting to hear from them just would not promote fundamental fairness. I believe that's good cause in and of itself, but there's also other good cause, and the other good cause is, this project has changed, and it does more closely meet the guidelines than before, and that in itself might be good enough cause, but the, the fact that the developer didn't get to, to present his application, I believe, shows plenty of cause. So I will be voting yes on this motion.
Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Your Honor. For all of the reasons that Councilmember Marriott stated, I'll also be supporting the motion, but there's one other point that I would like to make in, in reference to the attorney's comments, and that is that it's not just three months that this developer has been waiting, they submitted an original application two years ago, so they have been waiting two years to, to develop and to show us a, a development on this project. So that's just in addition to all the things that Councilmember Marriott said, so I will be supporting the motion.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the motion? Yes, Mr. Pfeiffer.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, as well.
I just, as well as what Councilmember Mayor Potem Miller, as well as Councilmember Marriott have stated, one of the reasons I asked for the hearing, if you recall back in January, was because I believe I want to hear more facts from the developer who was unable to answer our questions back previously in December. So I will be supporting the motion. I believe there's good cause in regards to getting additional facts from that developer and to have those discussions so I can feel more comfortable with what's being proposed versus the way it went in December. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Jones?
Yes, and I'll just keep this short. For all the reasons that my fellow councilmembers have discussed and about the reasons why I believe there is good cause, I too will be voting yes for this, the minimum requirement on this application to be waived.
Yes, Ms. Simpson.
Yes, so the developer has said that they have made some changes to the development plan that hope to meet in the middle with what the opposition has been presenting against the project. And so I will also vote to support the rehearing and be very interested in seeing what those changes are.
And finally, in our prior hearing on this matter, Ms. Drinca indicated concerns about the Design Review Committee and the scheduling of meetings that she apparently was not able to attend. And with this, if we allow this to move forward, there will be another opportunity before the Design Review Committee, and I would certainly expect that the staff will give Ms. Drinca notice of that so that she can participate in that process. That was one of the concerns that I had last time. So with that, I'll call upon Mr. Jones, your vote?
Yes.
Mr. Marriott?
Yes.
Ms. Simpson?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Frey? Mr. Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Whoa!
He was the mayor, wasn't he?
Yeah, he was. He was indeed, Mr. Pfeiffer. I should have put my glasses back on, sorry.
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well, and Ms. Ford was recused on the matter. Okay, so that passes six to zero. Next, we have public hearings. I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 20-015, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain property along Ralston Road, generally at the intersection of West 58th Avenue and Independence Street, for the construction of traffic signal utility and/or related improvements as part of the Highway Safety Improvement Program Project at West 58th Avenue and Independence Street, Project Number 18-TC-03. That's CDOT Project Number 22275. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This ordinance would allow us to acquire the property for a traffic signal improvement project at Independence and West 58th, something that's very needed. It would modernize, it would modernize the equipment at that intersection, provide for additional signals for protected left-hand turn lanes, turn lanes and things along those lines, something that's needed at that intersection, so we're recommending approval. And in addition to that, it leverages an investment that we're able to make with CDOT as well.
Very good. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address City Council on this matter? Do we have anybody? We have no one who has called in, no one who has sent an email, and no one present in chambers. So I'll close the public testimony portion, open it up for City Council question or action. Ms. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll go ahead and make a motion, and if anybody wants to discuss the motion, they can. I'll move that Council Bill 20-015, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain property along Ralston Road, generally at the intersection of West 58th Avenue and Independence Street, for the construction of traffic signal, utility, and/or related improvements as part of the Highway Safety Improvement Program Project at West 58th Avenue and Independence Street, Project Number 18-TC-03, CDOT Project Number 22275, be approved on final reading, numbered 4731, and ordered published by title only. And I'll just make a comment. I will be voting yes, of course, as we continue to update our capital infrastructure, in particular, our streets infrastructure. I think that's a good thing, and congratulations to you, Mr. Devon, and the city staff for being able to bring us these things at this time to continue with the, moving the city forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other council questions? If not, Ms. Ford?
Has a motion been made?
Yes, Mr. Marriott made the motion.
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marriott?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That passes seven to zero. Next, we have a public hearing on Council Bill 20-016, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Arvada and County of Jefferson, State of Colorado, for distribution of CARES Act funds. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item before you is part of a process of allocating over $2.2 billion from the federal government to Colorado, and then a additional sum of money to five local governments with populations of over a half million. Two of those local governments were Adams County and Jefferson County. Adams County, we already actually took an IGA that you approved by resolution back in April for the allocation of $243,000 of Adams County funds, and tonight before you is an allocation of about $9.2 million of CARES Act funds that was allocated to, from Jefferson County to Arvada. Jefferson County received about $101.7 million of CARES Act funds, and based on a population formula, they allocated several million dollars to municipalities within Jefferson County based on population, and for us, that was an allocation of $9,211,753. The, this IGA will enable us to utilize those funds in accordance with Department of Treasury guidance. We're looking at an allocation that would enhance financial support for Arvada businesses. That has been discussed through our Business Resiliency Task Force groups, financial support for nonprofit organizations that have been adversely impacted by the public health emergency, including human services agencies, rent, mortgage, utilities payment, food insecurity, sheltering, and things along those lines. And then we're going to reserve a certain amount to address the city's cost to responding to this public health emergency in order to make sure that we're reimbursed for the installation of equipment, completion, ability modification, and support work that's occurring by our team in remote locations. So we're very appreciative of the work that has been done by the county manager in Jefferson County, Don Davis, and all three members of the Board of County Commissioners, and we certainly recommend you to approve this ordinance.
Very good. Is there any member of the public signed up to speak on this? Either, there's no one in council chambers?
There's no one signed up.
Okay, very good. I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for City Council action. Ms. Simpson?
If there are no further comments from my colleagues, I'll make the motion. Perfect. I move that CP 2020-0003, a resolution by the Planning Commission for the City of Arvada, Colorado, to amend the Arvada-
Wrong one.
Oh, am I on the wrong one?
Yep, 2016.
2016. Gosh. How am I looking at the wrong one? Is my book out of order? Apologies, everybody. Here, somebody else has it in front of them, they can go ahead.
I have it, Your Honor.
Who's got, Mr. Jones?
I think we're out of order. I move that Council Bill 20-016, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Arvada and Jefferson County, State of Colorado, for distribution of CARES Act funds, CARES Act funds be approved on final reading numbered 4732 and ordered published by title only.
Okay, motions for approval, Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marriott?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye, and I did find it.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Ms. Ford?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, and I want to echo Mr. Devon's words. The county commissioners and the team at Jefferson County did a great job. You know, in some areas, there's been a lot of squabbling over these CARES dollars, and county commissioners from both Jefferson and Adams County quickly came to agreement with the respective city managers to move the monies out of the counties into the local governments, and we are so truly appreciative of that. So that passed seven to zero. Good work by everybody on that. Next, I'll open the public hearing. Are these last two together, Ms. Morris? I'm going to open the last two items. The first is the ratification and approval of CF, CP, hang on, glasses time, CP 2020-003, a resolution by the Planning Commission for the City of Arvada, Colorado, to amend the Arvada Comprehensive Plan 2014 to incorporate revisions related to the land development code update and associated remapping. At the same time, we'll consider Council Bill 20-014, an ordinance remapping a section west of Alkire Street and north of West 80th Avenue on the City of Arvada zoning map dated June 1, 2020, in conjunction with the Land Development Code 2020 and Comprehensive Plan. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have Director of Community and Economic Development, Ryan Stotelsky, who will lead us off in this, in this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for your time tonight. This is a continuation of what started a couple weeks ago with the approval of the land development code. We had considered the land development code and then the rest of the city of the land use map at that time. We felt that this area of the city, the northwest area, had some special considerations that we wanted to focus in on specifically with the community members, things related to water and other issues and growth patterns in the area that we thought required special attention and a little bit more community conversation. And so that's why we've separated this area out. Now we're going to turn it over to Rob Smetana to kind of go over what that process looked like and the specific recommendations that the Planning Commission made and what we believe is the right direction moving forward in this area. Go ahead, Rob.
Thank you, Ryan. Mayor, members of council, as Ryan mentioned, this is the last piece of the land development code and remapping effort, and as he did also mention, this is kind of the piece that we did separate out so we could have some additional conversations with folks in this northwest area of the city. Next slide, please. So this is, in terms of the comprehensive plan update, this is, the proposed update will modify the future land use map to be consistent with what we are remapping this area of the city to match up with the new land development code, and also to look, also to provide a little more clarity in terms of the details of the comprehensive plan in this area. So next slide, please. Here you can see the underlying map is our existing comprehensive plan land use map, and then the highlighted areas identify where changes are proposed to be made per the Planning Commission's approval of the comprehensive plan. For the most part, it stays generally in the same type of categories. The vast majority of the Candellas development stays as a PUD, the existing developed residential area. The same would be true for, I'm sorry, stays as suburban residential. Same is true for the area of Lyden Rock and Lyden Ranch properties. Those will stay low-density residential. The major changes really occur, if you look at the left side of this map, there's an area where we're changing or proposing to change some industrial land to commercial land, and then in the center of the page, an area proposed to go from mixed-use and commercial to suburban residential, and that was the area that Ryan had mentioned. There's been a lot of discussions with council on in the past. And then there are fairly, there are a few minor other changes there on the right side of the map. So if you go to the next slide, please. This just shows the updated land use map reflecting those changes. So you'll see a large majority of the area stays generally the same, except for those couple of areas I pointed out in the previous map. Next slide, please. And then here's the zoning map that reflects those changes, and I know this is difficult on the screen, but in your packets, you do have some blowups of the northwest area. And again, probably the most significant changes would be that the area that was previously new communities, the district that we have since removed, that will go to commercial, and that's kind of on the far left-hand side of the map there, top-left corner. And then the area within the center of Candellas, it would go from where it's currently zoned PUD, it would then transition to R6 zoning. And then some other changes kind of on the Indiana corridor, mostly just the changes to go from a mixed-use, new communities or PUD to our mixed-use suburban zoning districts. We did receive two letters regarding this effort. One letter was in general support of this project. The second letter relates to a specific parcel just along Highway 93 north of Highway 72, and this is a piece of property that the city is in the process of acquiring for a new water storage tank site. And as part of that effort, we did receive this letter requesting that that site be remapped from PUD to CG, Commercial General. That will allow the water tanks to be developed in a more, in a quicker fashion as an administrative review. The Planning Commission did hear that request and did recommend approval of that request. Next slide, please. And that, it's a parcel that does not have an address today, so we identified it by the parcel number. So the parcel number is there for you in case you would like to follow up on that recommendation. And again, that is the city site. And so the Planning Commission at their May 19 meeting did recommend, or did adopt the amendments to the 2014 Comprehensive Plan, which you will, are asked to ratify, and they did recommend approval of the official zoning map with the change, with that parcel number going from PUD to CG. And with that, I will be available for any questions.
I guess my question quickly on this is, so the motions that are before us already include that one change that was agreed to by the Planning Commission with regard to the storage tank?
That was part of their recommendation, so if you, if you would like to concur with that recommendation, I would just make that part of the motion.
So there needs to be an addition to the motion?
I believe so. Let me just check on that real quickly.
Can we just say as recommended by the Planning Commission? Because it doesn't, isn't it in their motion?
Yes, it is in their motion.
Okay, let's first see, do we have any public comment? We have no public comment on this, so I'll close the public comment, and we can open it up for City Council questions or action. Mr. Pfeiffer?
I can make the motions, but I also just have some questions for Rob.
Okay, I'll reserve you the motion. Go ahead with your questions.
Thank you, sir. So, Rob, hey, quick question on the parcel on Candellas. It's a very small, small parcel on, can you go to the map? I wish I could control and put a laser printer. I guess that's the hard part with, maybe not. Did you get it up there? I'm pretty big on that screen over there.
We're working on it.
Okay, all right. Well, while they're working on it, I'll try to describe. It's the small two parcels by the Town View Rec Center, I believe, for Candellas. There's two parcels there. There's also, I noticed, our new public hearing signs are on that land. And so I'd like you to explain, how does that public hearing- land. And so I'd like you to explain how does that public hearing and your recommendation either complement or conflict? Because I know there's a lot of discussion around, it's where it says MU to Suburban? I'm assuming, you see that little small parcel? It's kind of just north of where the Parkway is, or will be. I can't, I can't point to it, so. Rob, do you know which one I'm talking about?
Yes, yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of surrounded by the orange there.
Yeah, and it's red on the outside of it. Yes, it's on the bend. It, there's, you can barely see it. So could you maybe help, help me understand how this change into what it is and how that affects that current, current process with that public hearing?
Sure. Well, at the comprehensive plan level, this is basically a request to change the area from mixed use to just suburban residential, which would allow up to six dwelling units per acre as an average in that area. As it was evaluated, this is an area that's very close to the significant commercial area where the King Supers is located, and it was determined in reviewing that, that these parcels were fairly small and could really not accommodate the type of mixed-use development that was originally intended, excuse me, intended for this area. In the past, we also had another portion of this mixed-use area be converted to residential development. So that further restricted the size of this parcel. So the recommendation is to just allow that to become suburban residential, to allow for residential development. There are hearings at the Planning Commission tomorrow on recommendations for some townhome development in that area. So that would then be consistent, that would actually be consistent with either comprehensive plan designation, either the mixed use, which does allow for residential, higher-density residential, or the suburban residential, where it still overall fits within that six dwelling unit per acre.
Okay, so regardless of what we're doing tonight, either one of those designations don't affect that application and that process, and their request could actually fit in either, either one of those classifications?
That's correct. It's just the suburban better fits the situation.
But there, but I'm assuming it's, I want to make sure that we're not doing what we did, I want to be consistent with what we did the last time we talked about the comprehensive plan map, is that if we're going to make an exception and change something because a developer's asking it, that we follow, follow what we've been saying on the others, which is let them go through the proper process to change the designation. So I'm trying to avoid that conversation here. So I just want to make sure we're not changing that just to cater to them without going through a proper process.
No, we did evaluate it in the large, large picture of the comprehensive plan and evaluated just basically on the size of the parcels that remain and determined that mixed use is not extremely viable at that location.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Rob. I appreciate that.
Okay, any other questions from anybody? I can't, we need to put the council back up on the screen so I can see if any of the other council members there have any questions? No? Okay, Mr. Pfeiffer, you may make your motions.
All right, thank you. I move that CP 2020-0003, a resolution by the Planning Commission for the City of Arvada, Colorado, to amend the Arvada Comprehensive Plan 2014 to incorporate revisions related to the Land Development Code update and associated remapping, be ratified and approved.
And the staff satisfied that that meets the requirements for?
Oh, as ratified by the Planning Commission, right? It says ratified, so I assume it would.
Yes, as far as the comprehensive plan goes, that's fine.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, motions for approval. Any other questions on this? Mr. Marriott?
Yes.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Ms. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
And I vote aye as well. That passes seven to zero. Mr. Pfeiffer?
I move that Council Bill 20-014, an ordinance remapping a section west of Alkire Street and north of West 80th Avenue on the City of Arvada zoning map dated June 1, 2020, in conjunction with the Land Development Code 2020 and Comprehensive Plan, be approved on final reading numbered 4730 and ordered published by title only.
Okay, any comments on that one from councils? Don't see it. Yes?
Counsel, is this, I think this is the one we wanted to amend to add the Sleeping Indian Water Tank site. So if you'd wish to do that, now would be the time to do so.
Okay.
Can I say as, as recommended by the Planning Commission?
Yes, you can, you can indicate that you'd like to change the designation of the parcel and rezone it as, it looks like to CG for that particular parcel.
As she stated, because I don't have that in front of me.
Okay, so incorporating that change, which we've discussed.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Ms. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marriott?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. That passes seven to zero. That concludes our public hearings for tonight. Next, we have public comment. Kristen Rush, do we have anybody?
We do not have anyone else.
Very good. And so reports from City Council.
Yes, Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have a quick report. So I'm the liaison for the Business Improvement District in Old Town, and the big thing's coming in Old Town, the bid has worked with the city and all the stakeholders down there to come up with a plan to close a couple of the streets, Old Wadsworth as well as Grandview, to help allow the restaurants and dining establishments to expand their patios out into the streets. And I think this is a real positive change as we try to get back to normal. You know, a restaurant under the current guidelines cannot profitably operate at half-capacity. This will allow them to, in effect, double their capacity and then fill it halfway following the guidelines, but yet placing themselves in an economic position where they can be successful. Now, this is going to be a big change, and it's not without, going to have a little bit of turmoil. And so I just wanted to encourage everybody to please, as you go down to patronize the businesses in Old Town, whether they be an eating and drinking establishment or not, that you're very considerate to your fellow citizens. I would suggest for anybody who's very able-bodied like myself to please park far away and preserve those close parking spaces for those who have less ability to walk and travel great distances. I also would encourage everyone to do not avoid Old Town even if you're going there for other forms of business. Great pains have been taken to make sure that access is maintained to all the retail establishments, as well as all the offices and all the other services that are in Old Town. So please, be patient, patronize your favorite businesses in Old Town, and we really look forward to this being a very, very successful situation. So thank you, and that's all I have.
Right. Yes, Ms. Simpson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I sit on the Board of Directors for the Arvada Visitor Center, and I just wanted to announce and congratulate them. The Visitor Center has been awarded a grant in the amount of $7,500 to assist with recovery marketing efforts here in Arvada. This is tremendous. The team there has been doing an absolutely amazing job, working with businesses, finding out what their needs are, and how we can help promote them in the future as we all recover from the fallout of the pandemic. So a big thank you to that team and to Community First Foundation for the grant, and we look forward to putting it to very good use.
Great. Anyone else have any? Yes, Mr. Pfeiffer?
Actually, quite a few things. I, you know, Mr. Marriott brought up Old Town. I think this is a great opportunity to look at Old Town or kind of revitalize or even reimagine Old Town, so please do take advantage of it. I think this could potentially give us new opportunities and ideas of what can happen in Old Town in the future. So I would also encourage folks to patronize Old Town. As far as, I do want to bring up a little bit of the protesting that's been happening in Denver and all around the United States. And, you know, I think the biggest thing for me is, is really kind of, everyone should be peaceful when they protest and express their feelings and so forth, but there's a, I think there's a difference between protesting and violence and riots, and that's where we've gone. And I just would like people to, and we're in suburbia, so, you know, usually things knock on wood or a little bit quieter out here, but, you know, we need to respect those that need to protest and agree with and let them do that, and then try to separate those, those folks that are just creating havoc. But, you know, I just, it just, in this time, all I can say is this is just so disruptive to what we're trying to heal from the COVID-19, and now our businesses and communities are being just torn apart. So hopefully, we can move past that. But I also want to go into some of the emails that have come to us around our Arvada Police Department. Unwavering, our police department is one of the best in the nation, and there's been some accusations just because of what they see on TV right now with other, other community or large cities, that Arvada may fall into one of those, you know, police brutality or violence. And I have to say, it bothers me a lot to get these off-the-cuff, knee-jerk emails that accuse our police department of, of things that are not even remotely true whatsoever. So I just want our community to know that you're in the best hands with our police department and with this city, and Chief Straight has been awesome to our police officers and to our community and been respectful and responding to all those emails. And all I can say is, we are lucky to live in Arvada, and we're lucky to have such a great community like we do with our leadership and with our police department. And no doubt in my mind, we have the best police officers in the nation, and I just wanted to be really clear about that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for those comments. Anyone else? Can I get back to the screen?
Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to, I'd like to make a comment. I was notified today by a constituent that they had an experience that made them very uncomfortable in one of our stores here in Arvada, and I just really would like to encourage our citizens to be mindful of others when you're shopping, wear your mask, help others to be comfortable so that they can spend their money here in Arvada and not feel like they have to go somewhere else to spend their money. So that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. I'll certainly echo the comments from my fellow council members tonight as it pertains to Old Town, as it pertains to our police department, as it pertains to how wonderful it is to get that grant, and we are a resilient community here in Arvada, and together, we can get through all of this. And I'll actually be going down tomorrow, joining a number of other metro-area mayors to help do some cleanup downtown Denver. So we're going to get down there, and I'll have my gloves and work attire on, and we're going to show people that we can work together because this is a region that does work well together, and we certainly recognize the right to protest. It should be done peacefully, and we're going to help each other out to get through this the best way possible. So thank you all. Mr. Devon?
Just wanted to let the council know that next Monday, we do not have a council meeting. It was a workshop day that we had reserved actually for another matter that's now been changed. So our next meeting is June 15.
Okay, Ms. Morris?
Nothing from me, Your Honor.
Okay, we stand adjourned. Good night, everybody.